Well, we want to let you know, Dan, that we really appreciate everything you're doing. A $4,000 donation is very generous for you. We appreciate it and it's great to work with you.
Scott thought about taking a.
In the doorway.
Does he have his camera with him?
Marty's right on the camera.
See Marty with us.
Dan, quick question.
Yes, yes.
How many softball and baseball players?
I guess you were about 250.
Okay.
About 250 this year, about 19, 20, 17, I believe. Oh, no kidding. I was working T-ball all the way up to 15 U baseball and we're only 10 U softball teams. So it's from four years old all the way to 18 years.
Do you have a travel team?
We do not do travel.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't have the facilities for that. It's we can talk for sure.
Mr. Sue. Chuck, can I just add something is just so you know, those improvements that we just did were about $4,700. So this check really came in really good to help us with our budget. And also, as the supervisor knows, we've budgeted also to start the new lights for the nighttime. They're supposed to be in this week, so we're hoping the next couple of weeks to get those changed. So should be a really good season and they did do a great job this year. Okay. I think for the next month.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Next on the agenda is the cell tower. I believe Anthony's here. You want to step up and give us your name and address?
Good evening, everybody. Anthony Sirianni here from Stephen Norris L.P. representing Burt Bridge, RIT and Verizon Wireless. I believe today what we're planning on doing, what we're hoping to accomplish today is just getting a public hearing scheduled relative to our application for site plan approval and a special use permit. Since the last appearance, we did have our application presented to the Erie County Planning Board. There have been no comments with regards to the planning board. And I also have been advised that the Department of Transportation has basically recommended that there are no concerns and concur with the town's motion to act as lead agent for secret purposes. So beyond that, we did submit an updated site plan and EAF to your attention, which addressed the town engineers' comments. We were recently advised that those revisions were acceptable. Those are particularly with regards to, to the best of my recollection, have to do with the fact of installing a small light close by on the on the site plan. Finally, I do want to just address the question about the water tower installation. With regards to that particular issue, we did reach out to the Erie County Water Authority. They did advise us that the total ground area of that site was 20 feet by 25 feet. And the height of the facility was only 66 to 70 feet tall. So we have submitted some supplemental responses as to why that particular water tower is not fit according to our standards at Verizon site as to why that location is not optimal as opposed to the site that we've selected. Finally, I just have one other matter that I want to address is that if the board were to, and I'm assuming that that's what we're going to do tonight, if we're going to have a public hearing, I just ask that we be advised whether who takes care of the public notices, whether that's the town or us.
We we're going to set the public hearing and we take care of all the notices.
Okay.
500 feet from each property, is that right, Martha? Yeah.
Great. That's all I have. I provide you with the updates and if we're scheduling a public hearing, then that's all I have.
Okay.
Rich, I hit with a quick question, just just out of curiosity. So yeah, I had contacted the Erie County Water Authority and they gave me this information you had. Do you not, and this is just for my education, you don't extend off of a water tower to make it taller? The water tower itself has to be tall enough for your requirements?
Me, just take a look here.
Could you could you step up to the mic, please, or give us your name and address?
That's Brett Morgan, 1900 Empire Boulevard, PMB number 191 Webster, New York. Typically, no, we would not extend. The issue with that tank particularly is more of a ground space issue, though. They don't have enough space at the base to accommodate our ground equipment at the base of the tower.
Gotcha. Yeah, that's the information I was given from ECWA as well, but I was just curious because you referenced the height of the structure as well. So I was trying to figure out how that came into play.
I haven't seen it done and I've been doing it for 27 years now to do an extension on a tank like that. I think that'd be a bit of a engineering nightmare.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, no problem.
Rich, do you have anything to add to that? Anybody else? Ray? Okay, thank you, Anthony. Next on the agenda is the agreement with our grant writer, Robin Drake. Our town attorney has seen this and and recommended a couple of minor changes, which Robin was more than fine with. Everybody had time to review and.
Sure.
And. All good?
Yep.
Okay. Next is a rezoning request for 12 Old Glenwood Avenue. Is there anyone here there to represent that? Could you step up to the mic, give us your name and address and just tell us a little bit about it, if you would?
My name's Mona Cook. I'm actually the listing agent for that property. Oh, you you want my address, did you say?
Yes.
Okay, I don't live in East Aurora. I live just over the border, have a West Falls address, Ellicott Road, 7886 Ellicott, West Falls.
Well, that's part of the town.
Well, I'm 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 like two houses into Orchard.
Oh.
Yeah, I'm just over. I'm over the line.
You're over the line. Again, over the line.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. On the other side of the tracks. But anyway, so we we do have a buyer for the property. And I don't know if you're familiar with that property, but it's been a bar since 1800s. First level is still set up as a bar. My buyers would like to put apartments and we need the zoning change to an R3. I've submitted that application. I'm here on behalf of the seller. He couldn't be here tonight. That's Robert Alessi. So so basically, we'd like to have that changed so that we could put apartments, which personally, I think would fit into the neighborhood better than a bar. That that property's been on the market on and off several times for years. No one wants to buy a bar. It's it's too risky of a business in this day and age. I'm sure the neighbors would prefer to have residence versus bands playing till midnight, 2 o'clock in the morning. So that's basically what we're asking.
Okay, okay. Just so you know, tonight, we're going to refer this to the planning board.
Right.
For their comments and then they will send it back to us. Then we will set a public hearing, go through the public hearing and then.
Have the whole schedule of meetings.
Okay.
Was there a sewage issue on that that prevented it from being a bar or something?
No, actually, the 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 current the current owner had an engineer come and do a design. The way if if the bar was to open again, and it's going to be the same thing with the apartments, the current septic system needs to be expanded and the buyers are well aware of that. And we we have an engineer plan to do that. Okay?
Has it been used for anything?
The bar has been vacant for, I would say, close to four years. There's two apartments upstairs. I mean, it is. It is, you know, partially residential now. Anyway, there are two apartments upstairs that are occupied. The the bar, the 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 present owner, when he bought it, he wasn't quite sure what he wanted to do with it. He was thinking about opening a bar, but then he got involved in other things and he's like, I don't want to open a bar. So anyway, he's leaving it up to the to the next buyer to figure out what they want to do with it. But we need we need something to be done with the zoning because we can't even open a bar anymore accord according to without special use or some something has to be changed. We can't do anything right now.
Well, I think if it's a C2.
Yeah, you could. You'd have to go through the channels, the proper channel.
Right, right.
But but apartment building is just fine. We're not we're not suggesting a bar.
It's harder to find an apartment than a bar currently, so.
There's plenty of bars, not so many in West Falls, but.
Yeah. But correct me if I'm wrong, C2 does permit certain residential, right, uses? It's just that's still remained in the C2 zone.
Yeah, but I don't know if I don't know about multiple.
Not multiple dwellings. Only R3 allows multiple dwellings.
Yeah, so R3 is the only one that does multiple?
That is correct.
Yeah. R2 is not a.
Does not allow for the use that they want to do the building for.
Is it because of the number of units or?
That is correct, yes.
So how many units are are you is the buyer considering?
He's considering at least two. There's over 3,000 square feet on the main floor, the bar area. He they're considering at least two, possibly three.
Yeah, because I know there's no R3 around there anywhere. So that's to make the case to have an R3, I'm just saying, it's something to think about. I don't know. I don't think there's really much of a concern going from a C to an R. But the R3, the seller will want to think about substantiating how an R3 fits into that neighborhood. Just for the planning board to be prepared for that.
So what's your suggestion?
To understand the difference between RT and R2 and R3, look at the surrounding area and be be ready to provide basis why it needs to be an R3 and not an R2.
Well, what?
I do think, though, Luke, that that it fits in better as any Rs rather than a C2.
Yeah.
So we'll see what the planning board brings.
See what they come up with, but that, yeah.
So is there something I need to prepare for?
Yeah, I think that to bring to the planning board substantiation why R3 fits in in that neighborhood.
I I don't know.
They'll ask you all kinds of questions.
Okay, so then I'm not.
Go through all of it.
I'm not clear on the difference in the R2 and the R3. What is the difference?
R3.
R3 allows multiple dwellings, which is what you're doing.
More dwellings than than R2.
R2 is what, just a two unit?
I don't know how many units Rich's R2. Two dwelling unit.
Yeah.
Well, there's only one building.
Yeah, it's still the unit within the building.
Oh, it's the units.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yep, I'm sure I can assure you the planning board chairman is sitting right back here with the suit and tie on now. He'll go through it all with you and lead you down that path. That's the best way for everybody.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Everybody good? We'll put that on the agenda. Next is a special use permit for Sweet Road Camping, which I don't see the owners here. So with that, I mean, we're we are going to refer this to the planning board, so. Anybody have any comments?
No, they did it nice and early. I appreciate that. It's not till September and, you know, so that's good. Give us plenty of time to have discussions before making any decision.
The only question that I have is they outline 60 hours.
Yeah.
Friday, 12 hours, Saturday, 24, Sunday, but the people wouldn't be leaving till Monday morning, which is another 12 hours.
I I'm sure that's something that's going to come up in the in the planning board meeting, but you're absolutely right.
Okay, yeah, that brings them to 72.
Yeah.
You and using math to your advantage.
All right, everybody good? Next on the agenda is an open is a open development area request for 775 Jewett Homewood Road. This also is a referral to the planning board. Is there anyone here from 775 Jewett Homewood? See, no one. You would let me know if someone's online, right, Elizabeth? Anybody have any comments or thoughts?
Nope. Here what the planning board has to say and take it from there.
Exactly. Good, Ray?
I'm good.
There's someone online? I can't hear.
Douglas Ford.
Douglas Ford.
Yeah, I don't see him in here.
Next on the agenda is a request from Dave to hire some seasonal labors. You want to tell us a little bit about that, Dave?
Supervisor Schneider, these are the same crew we had last year. They're just repeat. So that's really good. They're already trained. We do have two more coming because we are losing our superstar Abby Hall this year. So the next agenda, we do have two more, but we are full after that. And then, as you know, we're shorthanded with a worker out for a little bit long. So just want to let you know, the next agenda, we'll have two more coming that are brand new. So good kids and glad to have them.
Okay, great. Any comments, gentlemen?
Oh, good things for Abby. She was a workhorse. She was great. Yeah.
Next on the agenda is a grant from Erie County, which will go towards the hot water tanks. Donna is not here tonight. Does anybody have any comments on that? This has been set up for some time, going on for some time, and we finally got it going through. I know Davis. Why don't you tell us a little bit about that, Dave?
Yes, that's the item on the next point, right? So just talk about that now, the hot water tank. Supervisor worked with the prior legislator, so prior supervisor back for this grant, correct? And we now Donna brought to me a quote that she had got from our maintenance service to replace the hot water tanks and it was $9,200, I think, in your packet. So we decided to do them in-house ourselves and we found two on state bid. And we're going to be able to do them for a little less than 4,000. So it's a good savings and it falls completely under the grant. So thanks to the legislator and then the highway.
Yep, absolutely.
And those were legislators. Right, and those were put in in 2005, I believe, Martha. Is that about right? So they're definitely probably at the end of their service life. So it's good. Should be good for 20 years.
Yeah. Yeah.
Keep them warm.
Yeah.
You good? Next on the agenda is a is an event application. Is there anyone here from has been here? We have gone through this and they are still don't, well, they don't have their insurance certificate. They do have a note on it that they won't have the event without their certificate, but you haven't received that yet, have you, Martha? And I was also going to kind of ask them what their hours were, but they've done this, you know, 5:30 to 7:30 or so. But I don't know. What are your thoughts?
I've I've been to this event at the Schoolhouse Gallery. It's actually very nice. Yeah, it's I I find I found nothing obnoxious about it. I don't know if they're planning to make any changes this year, but it was this is like they described, 20 people bringing their own picnic chairs and watching some local musicians drum for a little while, then going home. I agree with you. It'd be nice to be able to ask some questions, but based on what I personally observed, I don't have a problem with it.
That's pretty much what he says is that he doesn't have any problems in the past and doesn't expect any of this year, so it sounds like things are going to be stable.
There's a restroom on site. They use one of the buildings for has a restroom in it, so it's it's pretty low key. I think he, I don't know if it was, he's incorrect. He said he just recently had to start applying for a a special use permit, but either way, they've been doing it successfully for a number of years now.
All right, so we'll put this on the agenda, just make a contingent upon. And next we have an addition. This is from Monica Johnson. It's a plan application for a B and B. It's at 910 Ole M Road. This will this will also be a referral to the planning board. I know you just got this. I know you haven't had any time to go through it. But I thought we would let our more than competent planning boards go through it and let us know what where the problems are. Well, and Doug is gone. Here, I give him a compliment and Doug is gone.
Didn't stand the pressure.
Any questions on that, gentlemen?
That sounds good. Planning board, let them work it out.
All right. Next, we'll go into our regular meeting and we'll start with all the public hearings.
I think we have to wait, right, Mr. Supervisor?
It's not even 7 yet? Oh.
6:52.
Okay. Well, then we'll skip around that. We'll go to number two. Can I have a motion to approve the April 9, 2024 work session and meeting minutes?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is Audience One, an opportunity to address the board on anything on this agenda.
Maybe. Yeah. That just the public hearings will happen, so.
Oh, yeah.
Even though they're on the agenda.
Yeah, we got to wait till 7 o'clock.
Yeah.
Yeah. So with that, is there anyone here from the audience who would like to address the board on anything on this agenda? Brad, nothing for us tonight? Okay. We're going to have a little trouble going to unfinished business.
Want to do business from the board members or?
Business from board members?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll skip right on down to number seven, business from board members, and we'll start with.
Ray, with me?
Yes.
Why not? Open like I sent out to everyone, Open Space Committee, we met yesterday at Major South. We, I sent to all of you a draft two of the map that we'll put on the kiosk. The next order of business is to find someone to print that for us. So it needs to be waterproof. It needs to be, I think, like 16 by 20 or something like that. So we're going to start with a local company to see if we can get that printed up. Yes, looks great so far. Nice job there. And we did get together yesterday. It was a bit muddy. But what we did, and I'll pass this around, we did put up markers for the trails. Okay, so this is what we put on.
Are these reflective, right?
I don't believe so, but we don't anticipate anyone being out there after dark. Okay. And then what we did, Dave, and I think you've got a text from Brad Felton, is we put, yeah, and marked that. And in my truck, I do have all the excesses.
I gotta swing by tomorrow, look at that stump too, so I'll pick it up later.
Okay.
But yeah, thanks for all the hard work. So what he's talking about is the gift from the parking lot to the trail is a long field so that they can visualize, we're going to put posts all the way to the trail, just so people know that that's the.
Maybe what we can do is go out there together.
Yeah.
Yeah, just review that and see if all that is possible, because I think we were looking to put up 10 posts. Including one next to the creek that said, please do not go into the creek.
Yeah, yeah. So these are just four by four posts and pressure treated, so they should hopefully last forever. It's just to help the people stay on the trail. That's all. Cheap way to do it.
Sure.
Okay. And thanks for the hard work on a Sunday.
No problem. That's it.
Thank you, Ray. Councilman Moszansky?
So the period for the RFP period for the solar savings campaign has ended. We did get one proposal only, which is consistent with the Village of Hamburg, which also announced in the same period. We will be discussing that with the the one participant to see if they have the capacity and if everything will work. And if it's an acceptable proposal, which it looks like it is, then we'll propose that to the board to move forward. Addition to that, the Scoot Around June campaign is is moving forward for the CSC Task Force. And we also submitted a fuel inventory, which gets us points on the clean energy campaign. We're expecting that to close out here in the next couple of weeks with NYSERTA and that'll result in some funding as well. So with that and the the campaign, we got our plates full between the solar campaign and the and the the scooter on June for the next couple of months, but with that, we should be well set to meet our grant goals by the end of the summer. So.
Okay.
Yep.
Awesome.
And that's, yes, we still need to talk about where we want to do the energy audit because because of our work already, we do have a free energy audit in one of the buildings. And we can get someone in realistically to tell us a budget of how to improve any of these buildings, whether it's heat pumps or geothermal or whatever it may be. So we want to think strategically as to what town building we would want to do that at, use that free energy audit. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we've discussed it before and we're just going to have, someone's going to have to pull the trigger at some point because shouldn't be the town barn because town barn is, I mean, if we get someone to do an energy audit in the town barn, they might they might have, there's going to be a lot of work out there, right? But, yeah.
With the word coming forth in the library, that might be a candidate.
Yeah, the other part of the library is an issue with the county. We have not been reporting the energy use for the library as a part of our energy, our building. And the reason that we're getting this, one of them is because we've been reporting our energy use. So we, I don't think the library is actually a candidate, so that leaves, you know.
Maybe the perps, building, office, part of it. I mean, it's not very big, but because we're narrowing right down there.
Yeah, this building, the senior center. Library, we've got near forward, so it doesn't make sense to do it out there, the West Falls Library.
Yeah.
Yep. We're becoming too too efficient in our buildings, so.
Sorry?
We're becoming too efficient in our buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that's that's about it with what's going on with them.
Councilman McCann?
As we close in on 7 o'clock, I just have to report that I participated in the EA Garden Club's Trash Mob this weekend. It was a great group of volunteers, probably more than a dozen folks, and we hit spots all around the village and town parks and picked up a whole lot of trash. I found one shoe. If anyone's missing one shoe, let me know. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe, for that. I just want to mention, I think the eclipse went off without a hitch, no problems. Granted, it was kind of cloudy, but it was still pretty cool. I know where I was, which was 459 Snyder Road. Right at that, at the peak of the eclipse there, there was a small break in the clouds and we got to see it. Pretty cool.
Nice.
That and about a week ago, we had our July 3 organizational meeting for the for the July 3, the parade and and the fireworks and all of that, that went well and we're on a good path with that, I think. It's my first years as the well, as as Chief Krieger said, if anything goes wrong, Chuck, it's your fault. And I said, I'm going to blame Jim. I mean, I think that's only right, so. And let's see, we've had several initial meetings with the New York Forward officials, the state officials and and all of that. And our local planning committee meeting is coming up very soon with the with the committee that the state chose, that's coming up May 7, I believe it is. I'll let everybody know about that. So we're making progress and moving forward.
We have a meeting tomorrow, right?
And we have a training meeting tomorrow.
That's what that is, yeah.
Yeah, it's a training meeting, which is a Zoom. The the West Falls Fire Company was generous enough to let us use their facility for our local planning committee meetings, which would work out just great.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Nice.
And that's all I have. Now look at that, 7 o'clock. So we'll open the first public hearing at 7:01. This is a special use permit for 298 Ellicott Road in West Falls, New York for events. I see Neil is here. Do you want to come forward and just give us a little bit about that or or not? Well, you did. You don't have to say a whole lot because you have said a lot. I don't know. You don't have to say anything.
Pretty long-winded, so.
I'll cut you off.
I didn't get to address the board here, but basically the events. I didn't want to have to come and do a specific application every time I wanted to, you know, have a little gathering. So that's the reason for the the event application. Sure, there might be a wedding. Reception. You know, what, whatever. You know, we have a guy that works for us that's in a band, a brass band, not a, not like Leonard Skinner. not, uh, like Leonard Skinner or something like that, but, uh, I know they'd like to have an event there, so that's kind of the plan, you know, nothing, nothing crazy. Um, it's just because, and then it's, uh, well, the next one is the camping.
Well, we'll get into that in a second, that's.
Okay.
Public, that's a, that'll be the next public hearing, Neil.
Okay, so, so yeah, as far as the events go, uh, has, have they's got any questions?
Well, I'll open up the floor if you're done. Thank you very much.
Done.
You're done? And I'll open up the floor to anyone who would like to address the board in regards to the special events application at two ninety-eight Ellicott Road. Anyone? Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing at seven oh two. Next on the agenda is the public hearing for the campground, as Neil just said, at two ninety-eight Ellicott Road. I'll open this public hearing at seven oh three. Neil, would you like to come forward and say a word about that or no?
Change camera, I noticed it showed much.
No, no.
Those are the effects that Elizabeth does on the camera.
So the camp, um, as you guys know, it was, uh, years ago, it was a camp of roughly eighty-eight sites. I have no intentions of developing eighty-eight sites. Um, you know, we're, we're on a hip camp. Hopefully that turns out to be a little more successful than it's been, um, we obviously had to put the brakes on here recently, so. Um, but look forward to it, and that's, that's why we're, we're going through with the, uh, the application for the, the camping, for the hip camp, and I don't, I might try to sign up for some other ones if we get the interest.
Sure.
All good?
Yep.
Thanks.
And we'll open up the floor if anyone wants to address the board in regards to the campground at two ninety-eight Ellicott Road. Just give us your name and address.
Hi, Patty Mackus, uh, fifty-two seventy Newton Road Orchard Park. I have a question, is the campground open to the public?
I'm sure he's, yeah, uh, uh, I'm sure he's gonna, yeah.
Okay, that was my.
It's not his own private campground, if that's what you mean.
That's what I'm asking, yes, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
So as far as being open to the public, my intent is not to have a sign up by the road. Just, just because, we're, we're, we aren't set up for that.
Sure, you'll regulate who comes in.
I think the, the hip camp does a pretty good job, so word of mouth, friends, family, that's okay, but I don't wanna put a sign up, because there, I have no doubt that once you put a sign up, uh, we'll, we'll have too much.
Sure.
And so I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go there.
I, I don't think we have any problem whatsoever with regulating how many and who comes into your campground. Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close this public hearing at seven oh five. Next on the agenda is a special use permit for four twenty Olean Road. I'll open this public hearing at seven oh six, um. Ron, would you like to come up and just give us a little short, brief overview of what you have in mind?
Well, um, I'd like to, uh, open up an undercoating business and repair business. Um, I lost my spot where I used to do it, Noma.
And this is, this is where.
Four twenty only.
Stanley.
For Stanley collision.
Collision was previously. Um, and anything else you'd like to add, Ron?
No, that's about it.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Anyone else from the floor, like to add anything, uh, in regards to the special use permit at four twenty Olean Road? Seeing no one, we'll close that public hearing at seven oh six. Next. Is a public hearing on the, uh, town code chap, changing of chapter one sixteen, section sixteen dash eight dot nine oh three. Uh, this is in regards to the, um, bed and breakfast code. Would anyone like to address the board in, in that regard?
That is in, the, um, proposal and question is for C three, not bed and breakfast.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, for bed and breakfast, yes.
The junkyards.
Seeing no one, we'll close that public hearing at seven oh eight. And next on the agenda, uh, let me just do a little bit of explaining here, so this is in regards to the property at six hundred Olean Road, the golf center site, um. We set the public hearing at the last meeting, and, uh, about five days or so after that meeting, it was already sent to the paper to be published as a public hearing, and we were notified that the site plan is most likely going to change. So although this will be, uh, you know, the public is certainly welcome to come up and address the board, but this will be more of an informational hearing, uh, because once we get the, the, uh, um, new site plan, then we will obviously, uh, give it to the planning board, and we will then hold the official public hearing. So if anyone would like to address the board as an informational hearing, I will open that at seven oh nine, please step up to the mic, if it be Harrison or Paul would like to come up and just talk to us briefly.
The, the plan really hasn't changed, uh, but the site plan itself is not gonna look the way the documentation, uh, currently looks, so, yeah. And there's a number of questions that were raised by the board that we need to go back and address.
Yes.
Um, so we're looking forward to meeting with, uh, the architecture, uh, Paul's, Paul's firm.
Mm-hmm.
To clarify that, um, if anyone's been by the property, you've seen, uh, some heavy construction equipment, and I just wanted to comment on that, in case anyone had any concerns, uh, there are two wells on the property, as I've indicated previously, I do not own the wells. Uh, the owner, Wheel Resources, Inc., has applied for and received, uh, two, I don't know if it's permits or something, from the DEC to cap the wells. So what you're seeing there is the heavy equipment needed to basically drag it over a very muddy path. Because nothing has been improved on the property, so they're basically dragging it through, and uh, they've got a, they've got a piece of, uh, a piece of equipment like that right now, they have, uh, apparently got the permit set up to do the capping tomorrow.
Oh.
And that's it, as of this morning, I received that email from the DEC.
Okay, okay.
So the wells will no longer be a factor moving forward, there, there'll be, I mean, they'll still have that, uh.
And it's capped.
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming they'll still have some claim to the well, but there'll be no need to access it theoretically.
Right, correct, right.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harrison. Would anyone else like to address the board? Hi.
My name is Therese Campagnelli, I'm at two fifty-eight Olean Street. Thank you both for answering my email today, I appreciate it. Um, the first question that I have is in regards to, um, notice of public hearing. What kind of notice is given to the public? Where is the notice done?
Well, it's on our website, it's on, it's on Code Red, and it's in the paper.
Okay.
Let me just explain what the Code Red is, so Code Red is, is our system that we use for emergency notifications, but there's also general notifications. So that is chosen by whoever would, is signs up, but generally it is an email, text, and telephone that goes out.
We don't telephone these.
We don't telephone police, not these ones, just emergencies?
Just emergencies get telephoned.
And, uh, we also post them onto Facebook and, uh, our Instagram page. So we try to take a proactive effort to reach out to people when there is a public hearing. Um, Joe, we did do this for the public hearings that are actually happening. Uh, the reason that this one, uh, was not publicized in that manner is because of the changes that happened after the public hearing was posted, so because there needs to be a public hearing in the future about the same topic, then we will go through all of the normal channels to reach out to as many residents as possible to inform them that we will be having a public hearing on the property.
Okay, I'm signed up for Code, Code Red, and I did not receive any emails or.
Again, we didn't do it because this is not.
Did you get the one for four twenty Olean?
I did not.
Hmm.
I didn't.
Are you getting anything from Code Red?
I'm not receiving any.
Okay, something's amiss, because I had, I did the one for four twenty, which certainly would have included your property, and, um, I had like ninety contacts on there, so, so you might wanna check your Code Red, or, or reach, or send me an email and we can work on it together, um, because something's amiss there.
Okay.
Again, this, this didn't happen for this one, because this is not a, the public hearing is, we just.
Okay, but I didn't see anything for anything else that's on the agenda today for a public.
Well, it is on our website. No, I, well, I can't speak for Facebook.
We didn't get, we didn't get it on Facebook, sorry about that.
But it, but it is on the town's.
That just went up on Friday, which I don't feel gives people enough time to read the necessary documents and even prepare to be at a meeting.
But again, this public hearing is not happening, right?
Yeah, I'm just talking about, I, I, I'm not trying to attack, I'm trying to say, I don't think putting it up on Friday afternoon gives, uh, because, for example, I didn't know, obviously you guys know me, I've been following the golf course thing for a while. Um, so the last I had heard that it was gonna be on this meeting, but then I saw it posted on the wonderfully soror and Facebook page, um, saying that it wasn't gonna happen, and then it suddenly appeared, like I happened to see it today, so I called the town to see, when did this go up? And I was told it went up on Friday, I don't think putting up the agenda and the supporting documents one business day before is accurate notice for any of.
I, I agree with you, Teresa, a hundred percent, that's for sure, and, um, uh, I will see where the hiccup was with Rob, uh, and, um, we will do our best to do better.
I would also suggest that social media be utilized more fully, because the circu, I'm willing, the circulation of the East Aurora newspaper is a little bit less than the fun people on the East Aurora Facebook page, or that may be the town.
We, we would never, as a town, use like the East Aurora or any of those pages.
That's fine.
We have a, maybe if somebody wants to share it from the East Aurora Facebook page, they can do that, but we're not gonna post on private Facebook pages.
It, it.
Yeah, I dropped.
It will be on the town website, Teresa.
Okay, that's, that's fine too, that's, but we need to reach everybody. Um, my second question is, um, what kind of changes are being made to the site plan?
We don't know, we'll see shortly though, but we don't know.
Okay, so you don't have any idea of that, um. What type of conversation has been had about how this business will affect the area? Because the meetings that I've been to and such have talked a lot about forms being filled out correctly and submitted correctly and, and such, and obviously that's important, but I haven't heard a lot of conversation amongst the board about, during the meetings, about how this is contributing to the village and the town and, um, the character as a whole. Um, I was looking at the couple of things, um, first of all, the com, regional comprehensive plan that is referred to, which is way back in two thousand and one, but is referred to, and it doesn't seem, there hasn't been conversation around these items in this comprehensive plan, for example, preserving the rural character of the town through proper planning and development. Has there been a conversation about what kind of businesses should go in this new business area, or whatever you wanna call it on Olean Street? Has there been talk about how businesses these should, how big these businesses should be?
We are not gonna get into defending and saying, in, in a public hearing like this, and take all that time up to say just exactly what's been said with everyone. We have had the public hearing and went through all the channels, when, when the zoning was changed from agricultural to C two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but if you wanna voice your opinion on what you think is right or wrong with having that property there, you're welcome to do that. But, uh, we are not gonna give you our opinions.
Okay, how do I find out more about that?
More about what, what we think about it?
Conversations were and, and what's been decided that.
It hasn't been decided yet, Teresa.
Okay.
It hasn't, we, we are, we are looking for your input.
My input is that area, but I, I've expressed my input before, I want the town's input, because the town ultimately decides what goes there, and I, as a resident, can say what I think, and I have many times. Um, but I wanna know what the board is thinking, I wanna know what the overall.
We are not forming opinions yet, Teresa, until we get through the public hearing, which is not tonight. And, and the night that we vote, you will hear why we voted the way we voted.
Can we hear before then what your thoughts are for that area?
Someone wants to share that with you, I cannot, I can't tell the board what, the board members what to do if they wanna share.
I guess my direct question is, what is the thought process for that particular area?
Again, Teresa. We are looking for input from everyone before we decide on any of it.
Okay.
Our minds are not made up yet.
Okay.
I mean, we don't have a, we don't have anything to make up our minds about, because there's no formal application that's been submitted, and so we don't have the opportunity to speak about it, so you have heard our thoughts about the rezoning, where we did discuss a lot of the elements that you're bringing up right now. Uh, we spoke about the character of the neighborhood, we spoke about the, uh, types of businesses that are allowed per each zone. Um, but at that point, the request was to rezone to a different zone, not specific to the golf event. At this point, we don't have anything on the agenda to discuss, to, to talk about, so there's nothing we can say, whether the, the use or the hours or the expense or no fence or whatever may be a part of that property, because that specific project's not come to us yet. It has gone to the planning board, and they are our advisory board that we take very seriously, but the final opinion is made from us. But we, we don't have anything to, to speak about at this point, because we haven't received that to be able to talk about it. So we are aware that there are plans, just like you are, uh, for a golf facility. We saw the preliminary plans, which are changing, and when we receive the updated uh, plans, we will certainly have robust conversation about it, that it would be open to the public, because we're not permitted by law to speak about anything more than two of us at a time, so.
Okay, well, then I look forward to seeing you at future meetings.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board? No one? Seeing no one, I will close that informational hearing at seven twenty. Okay. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. It is our general policy not to vote on things the same night as a public hearing, so we will be, um, tabling these, and we will vote next meeting, okay? Is everyone in agreement with that?
Yes.
Um, I'm, I'm fine, doesn't matter to me, must rush.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Well, I mean, honestly, and, and we'll start with, uh, two ninety-eight Ellicott for the special use for the events, is, uh, if Councilman McCann and myself could get together to, to, uh, tweak some of the requirements and things, just notes, uh, that have been discussed with the planning board, with the owner, and get that on piece of paper, then it would be, uh, uh, a better time to pass that than the.
Yeah, time.
At the next meeting.
Yeah, times to the, the bands don't go past a certain point, things of that nature.
Exactly, just simple, just simple things, hours, construction times, whatever, okay? So if I could have a motion to table the, uh, two ninety-eight Ellicott Road special use permit, at this time, can I let, motion by Ray?
Second.
Second by Joe, comments or discussion? Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the campground. Can I have a motion to table the uh campground special use permit for two ninety-eight? Motion by Luke, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray, comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda. Is the uh property. A special use permit for four twenty Olean Road. Can I have a motion to? Can I have a motion? To table the special use permit for tor- four twenty Olean Road?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mister Supervisor, I would like to uh as a matter of opinion, think we can probably move forward on the C three.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree. Yep. Regarding the C three, can I have a motion to accept the changes made to the Town of Aurora Code as written in the local law three dash twenty twenty-four? So wait, this is a roll call vote? Or adopting the local law? All right, I'll rephrase. Can I have a motion to adopt? Local law three zero two oh two four with the changes made to the Town of Aurora Code as written? But this is a roll call vote.
So moved.
Wait, motion what? Motion and a second, second by Luke.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Councilor Rasm.
Aye.
Supervisor Snyder.
Aye. Next. Where's L? Table it. Yeah. Can I have a motion to table the site plan um application for six hundred Olean Road? So move only. Motion by Luke, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the cell tower. Can I have a motion to approve holding a public hearing at seven o'clock on May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four? At the Town of Aurora Municipal Center, five seventy-five Oakwood Avenue?
So moved.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is our grant writer. Can I have a motion to authorize? Uh, the super supervisor to sign the agreement with the grant writer, Robin Drake? So payments will be made uh in twenty hour increments after those twenty hours are used. And uh, payments for the year twenty twenty-four will come uh from the ARPA funds. So moved. Motion by Luke, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? Our town attorney did look through through this and she is more than fine with it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a payment for Ford Albert. Can I have a motion to approve payment number eleven to Ford Albert? In the amount of nine thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents for professional services rendered. From December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three through March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four for the Church Street Bridge Replacement Project.
So moved.
Luke, motion by Luke?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And next is another payment to Ford Albert. Can I have a motion to approve payment to Ford Albert in the amount of eleven thousand sixty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents for professional services rendered? For from December thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three to March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four for the East Fillmore Avenue Bridge Replacement Project.
So moved.
Motion by Ray?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now, under new business, we want to add. This I got right here. Yep. We want to add the um. Site plan application for the for the property at nine ten Olea, wait, yeah, for nine ten Olean Road. So can I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second? Second, second by Joel.
Luke.
Second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And that will be five N. All right. Next on the agenda, under unfinished business. Is the East Aurora baseball donation? New new business. Wait. Yep, that's what I said, didn't I? Oh, I'm sorry. Under new business, is the East Aurora baseball application? Can I have a motion to accept a donation of four thousand dollars, the three thousand dollar check plus the thousand dollars that we received? From East Aurora Baseball and Softball.
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a budget amendment in regards to the donations. Can I have a motion to approve amending the budget to reflect? The two donations from the East Aurora Baseball and Soft- Softball. Increase revenue line A two seven zero five dot two donations to the East Aurora Baseball and Supplies by four thousand dollars. And increase appropriations line A seven one one zero dot four 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 Parks and Landscaping Supplies by four thousand dollars. Can I have that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Luke?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is twelve old Glenwood. Can I have a motion to send the zoning change request for twelve old Glenwood Road to the planning? Uh, board for review and comments?
So moved.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. Opposed? None. Motion carried. Next is a request from Liz Cassidy. Can I have a motion to send the special use permit for nine 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 eight eight Sweet Road? To the planning board for review and comments?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second? Second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next on the agenda is the property at seven seventy-five Jewett Holman Road. Can I have a motion to send the open development area application to the planning board? For review and comments on the property at seven seventy-five Jewett Holman Road?
So moved.
Motion by Luke, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Any comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the seasonal workers. Can I have a motion to approve hiring John Evans and Charles Gurkin at a rate of sixteen dollars an hour? And Nathaniel Bender and Christopher Keller. At a rate of fifteen dollars and fifty cents per hour, all our residents of the Town of Aurora.
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the Erie County Grant Agreement. Can I have a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the intermunicipal agreement between the Erie County and the Town of Aurora Senior Center? For the five thousand dollar grant funds going towards the um hot water tank replacement.
So moved.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is the hot water tank quotes. Can I have a motion to approve the purchasing of two hot water tanks? Off the New York State bid for three thousand nine hundred ninety-six dollars and fourteen cents to be paid from line. Eighty-six seven seven two dot four oh one using the grant funds?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second? Second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a budget amendment. Can I have a motion to approve amending the budget to record the grant funds from Erie County for use by the senior center? The amendment is as follows. Increase revenue line A two seven zero six grants from local governments by five thousand dollars. And increase appropriations line A six seven seven two dot four oh one, senior center supplies by five thousand dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Ray, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next. Is a request from Chris. Can I have a motion? This is. Bye bye. Oh, this is the one that was backwards on. This is the uh special event application. Can I have a motion to approve the special app, special event permit at ten fifty-four Olean Road on July twenty-sixth? And um. And make that contingent upon receiving a certificate of insurance. Motion by Luke?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a request from Chris. Can I have a motion to approve hiring the seasonal pool and recreation staff? Uh, as presented, the rates are based on the board approved twenty twenty-four rate chart, which is attached.
So moved.
Motion by Ray?
Second.
Second by Joe. Comments or discussion?
It, Chris, it's great, great to see how many of these kids are coming back year after year, so you must be doing something right. Okay. Yeah, somewhere got five, six years in, that's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a motion from Liz DeViso. Can I have a motion to approve a ten hour, four day work week for highway highway employees from April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four to August thirtieth, twenty twenty-four?
So moved.
Motion by Joe?
Second.
Second by Luke. Comments or discussion?
And I bet the guys appreciate this, I'm guessing, right? I say guys because I think it is all guys right now, but uh. It's great to be able to as a town, you know, and they still get the work done, but uh, you know, it's they get that three day weekend out of it.
Right, so yeah, absolutely, the workforce loves it, but it has a uh even better tax uh savings too. Because it's our busy season working long hours. So during the paving season, it's usually a ten, twelve hour day, so in a way it does cut back. And then it actually helps our parks department then too, because they continue to work Fridays. So all the equipment is available that they may not have been able to use. So we've been doing this now for fifteen years and uh. It's just a summer thing, so it's a win on every way.
Perfect.
Another discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next is a request from Liz Cassidy. Can I have a motion to approve a civil service change for Dorothy Bailey from? From clerk part-time to clerk part-time seasonal effective May sixth, two thousand twenty-four through September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second? Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have a budget transfer. Can I have a motion, motion to approve uh transfer of funds? From of two thousand dollars from line A nineteen fifty. To line A nineteen ten to correct an overdrawn appropriation account?
So moved.
Motion by Luke, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. And lastly. Can I have a motion to send a uh site plan application? For the property at nine ten Olean Road as submitted to the planning board?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Luke. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Phew. That seemed longer than usual.
Slightly more confusing.
Check's tired of talking.
Okay, under communications and reports, I have the dog control officer for March twenty twenty-four and the building department. Report from March twenty twenty-four. We've already done business from board members, so our next. On the agenda is audience two, an opportunity to to address the town on any. Concerns or topics pertaining to the town. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Would anyone like to come forward? Could you give us your name and address, please?
Hi, I'm Patty Mekas, fifty-two seventy Newton Road Orchard Park, New York. I'm here today. First of all, I want to thank the board and um supervisor Snyder and the board for allowing me to speak. I am from Cottile, the Citizens Against Wind Turbines in Lake Erie. I have sent over some information emailed previous to the meeting here today. NYSERDA, the New York State Energy and Research Development Authority. Twice, they've done a report. Once was in two thousand ten, second was in two thousand twenty-two. They announced that it was not feasible to put wind turbines into Lake Erie at this time. Well, with Cottile, we knew that. While with Cottile, we knew that New York State, they would be back, they would circle around. And we can't wait ten years again. Just a little information on wind turbines, they're as tall as the Seneca One Tower. Um, they would be in the water three to five miles out and a half a mile apart. There is a no-go zone which affects boating and fishing and our, um, merchant ships that come through. They're not allowed to weave back and forth because of the cables and, um, also there's a thirty-two hundred feet. It's because that was determined when the blades fly off, when they've become defunct and they're they're falling apart. So that's why there's a thirty-two hundred feet. Um, the turbines are on a concrete base, they're buried in the lake. And they have to dredge the lake from the shoreline out to the two and a half miles out to the turbine. They will, when they's heavy, excuse me, when they dredge, heavy metal toxins will be suspended into our water, polluting our water, our drinking water. Eleven million people in Western New York get our drinking water from Lake Erie. Turbines leak oil into the water, they have to have oil changes just like a car. And this, a lot of times they leak oil into the water, which just floats on the water. Also, the blades have leading erosion. What I mean by that is the blades, as they circle around, they shear off little teeny tiny plastic, which are called PIFAs. And that are, that's a chemical, a forever chemical that cannot be filtered in our water. And when we ingest it, it gets stuck in our liver. You've probably heard a lot about PIFAs. Um, environmentally, the birds, the bats, the eagles, mortality on those, the fishericks affected by spawning areas. It also affects our border patrol, it interferes with the effectiveness, effectiveness, border safety is an issue. Tourism. Nobody wants to look at those, those turbines. People come here from all over to see Lake Erie. And our sunsets are very beautiful and valuable. Property values will go down, those lakeshore homeowners, they don't want a turbine out in front of their lake. Um, another big, huge problem that will affect here in Aurora as well as the rest of the communities, the increased cost of electric. Those turbines are not as promised, the electric, we don't, they don't produce what they're saying. Um, we know this is tried and true in Germany, twenty years they've been doing it, their, uh, electric bills have quadrupled. And this is our taxpayer money. These wind turbines are subsidized, these companies would just fall apart if the money wasn't there. And why do I ask, uh, Aurora to take a look at this? It's number one, our drinking water, we cannot just ruin our drinking water. Hospitals, schools and restaurants all depend on water. Um, so I asked the town, if you could please consider the resolution. Seventeen other towns in Erie County and Chautauqua have signed on for the resolution and, um, just one thing, we must protect the world we live in without clean drinking water, there is no life, it is essential. So thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Patty.
Thanks for coming.
Can I just, uh, guess about you? In front of the, the quick paper runners? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mark Wocling, four seven five Center Street, I am a Town of Aurora resident and I'd like to support the, what, what the previous lady was saying about the wood tur- turbines in the lake. I'm a little familiar with them and their negative environmental impacts. And as those turbines will affect the Town of Aurora, because all of our drinking water does come from them, and I think all the towns surrounding the lake like ours should stand together and voice to New York State that we do not want these turbines in New, in, in our, Lake, Lake Erie.
Good. Thank you, Mark Smart.
Hi, uh, my name is Emma Doughty, I live at seventeen fifty-nine Hubbard Road. And I would like to bring up two smaller issues, if that's all right? Um, I live on Hubbard Road, as I previously mentioned, where the speed limit, I believe, is forty-five. But regularly, there are probably ten to fifteen cars that highly exceed that speed limit. My sister was almost hit by a car yesterday. So it's kind of a pressing topic. And I was wondering if there was any kind of preliminary speed trap that can be placed? Or perhaps a cop, um, placed where Major's Park parking lot is? Just for a preliminary check? To see if that area needs more, not patrol, I guess, but more enforcement? Because it, it's getting quite dangerous and there's a lot of hills on my road and there's a lot of blind edges. And there are a lot of kids that live there.
Okay, I will bring that up with our chief of police, unless he would like to comment on it right now.
Yeah, we, we're just about ready to get our speed monitoring devices out, so we can get one out, um, the units are ready to be deployed.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
My second issue also pertains to Major's Park. Um, this is actually an issue that a lot of my neighbors have been discussing, and since I'm here, I might as well bring it up. Major's Park has long since been used as a dump spot for rock and gravel. And that cliff that's overhanging, the short, like, ten-foot overhang, has been extended about twelve feet in the last four years, I believe. And not only is it first going against the sign that says right next to it, no dumping, which I guess maybe that's exempt. Maybe your rock dumping is exempt from the sign that says no dumping there. But it's also majorly affecting how many deer we see in the field that's directly underneath it. And it's, um, also affecting the bird species that nest in that cliff area, because the constant dumping of rock over it, even when the rock is being picked up to go put somewhere else, I believe, it's also used as a temporary holding spot. Um, is damaging the cliff. That a lot of birds, and I've seen, um, I don't know the name of it, but the ground owl uses it there too. We see screech owls there a lot as well. I was wondering if there's any solution to it, or maybe a secondary area?
Well, uh, Dave, you want to comment on that or no?
I just want to thank you for your concern, um, the Town Highway hasn't dumped there now in three years, we've discontinued dumping there. The reason it had a no dumping, yes, there has nothing been dumped there in three years since the last bridge we removed. Um, there. Okay, let me finish. Yeah, so that's not dumping, that's storage of materials for our work jobs. So when you're talking dump and fill, the highway department discontinued that. The reason for the no dumping sign, which seemed confusing that the highway continued to dump, is because any contractor out there looks for places to dump. So the no dumping sign had nothing to do with the Town Highway. So that parking lot was part of the original major's plan pro, plan to build. It's complete, there will be no more dumping there anymore. As far as for the stone storage, the highway needs those spots around town, because it saves the taxpayers a lot of money in transportation when we're doing roadwork, such as when we oil and chip Hubbard Road. In fact, I think that's the last time you saw it by all the stone there. Um, also too, uh, it's just kind of the needs of the town to have these places. We have a huge town and our highway department's literally up in the northwest corner. So we have to cover all the way for all of our roads, so that's the reason. Um, as far as that hurting birds, I'm not sure how that would. Um, but we do plan on continuing to use that as storage as needed, which is only every couple of years we have a project, like when, uh, a road's being milled, um, to save on the transportation, the fuel, the dump trucks, instead of, because we have to keep up with the miller. It's a staging ground, so I, I, I've never heard any other residents that were upset about that, but that explains why, it's actually for the benefit of the taxpayer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question.
Okay, that's great. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Mary Hudson, I live at three sixteen Palm Enders Square in the Town of Aurora. And I also support protecting our freshwater in Lake Erie, and I support the resolution against wind turbines in Lake Erie. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Elizabeth's trying to get you over there.
Oh, I have somebody.
Can you hear me there?
Yep, we got you now.
Okay, this is Doug Ford, fifteen fifteen Quaker Road. I just have a couple of quick questions, and it, it's about the, uh, cell tower, public hearing now, will you vote on it on May thirteenth?
Uh, I said, yeah. Yes, we probably will.
That's the day of the hearing.
No, I'm, Joe's right, that's the day of the public hearing. Oh, no, we won't, we will not be voting it out that night.
Okay. Um, and the other question I had on that was the application that's out on the, uh, website, was that, were there changes done to that application? Uh, with the workday that Verizon has done on that recently, like contacting the water authority?
Not that I'm aware of.
Cause there were comments in there that, you know, that
Anthony?
They contacted different places.
Anthony is gonna come to the mic and speak to that.
Okay.
The question, the question was with regards to whether we contacted the Erie County Water Authority? What was, what was the specific?
Changes.
Any changes?
Yes.
Per the direction of the Erie County Water Authority? No, there were no changes.
Were there changes made to the application, comments about, uh, some of the search you've done for sites and all that? So is the original?
That's correct. No, no changes have been made with regards to the search ring, we just have provided an amendment with regards to the question of the request to the Erie County Water Authority, um, which we can provide to the board.
Yeah, yeah. For the, to put it on the water tower.
Correct.
Yes.
With regards to the water.
Yes. Okay, does that?
Okay.
Does that answer your questions?
I, yeah, yeah, it does. Um, without getting into specifics of, of, um, what they found, but, um, and the only other thing I had was, I have to jump on the young lady's comments she made earlier about the agenda coming out on Friday. Um, myself, I just got back home from Boston and had time to jump on here, but, um, if there's anything you can do to get a little more time on that, um, that would be appreciated by a lot of the people.
We will address that very shortly.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Yep.
That's all I got, have a good night.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, the public comments are set now. Next. We'll go to staff reports and we'll start with Rich.
Uh, nothing to report this, uh, meeting, thank you though.
Dave?
Yeah, just, uh, commend our dog control. Uh, you, you know how busy Highway and Parks is, but we had a very unfortunate dog chasing, it went on for a week with a dog from Wales, um, and we put in a lot of hours to help, uh, resolve that, uh, the dog now is with a good home. It never was our dog, but because it was right on the border, it kept drifting back and forth, so it took, uh, and also East Aurora Police helped us a lot with it too, and the sheriffs, um, we were able to get the dog to a good home, so I think a lot of people followed that on the social media. But I, I just want to commend all of our hardworking people, they work twenty-four hours too, so that's it.
Great. Thanks, Dave. Shane?
Okay.
Chris?
Uh, just had our opening day of non-reg, non-president registration for, uh, our summer programs today, so they're starting to triple and fill in some gaps we had. Still have some openings at our T B I C camp. Uh, so we are gonna be going through some of the residents who have signed up and are on the waitlist of having parties. Big thing. Parents over the summer, child here, uh, that also last week, I have a brain a little bit to discuss some of the improvements of the town and state personnel.
Good. Good. There you go. Great. Thanks, Chris. Chairman Crowe? Nothing tonight. Raz? Hiding back in there. Paul? Can I have a motion to approve the abstract?
So moved.
Motion by Joe, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ray. Comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried, and can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Joe?
Yep.
Second by Luke.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.